Yes. I think we've been summoned to...
Good morning, how are you?
It's good, it's good.
There's not even any questions.
There's plenty of questions.
Morning, sir.
What's your name?
That's mine.
How are you, Tom? Good morning.
Our next victim, I mean, is here.
Good morning.
I think we're ready to resume our special meeting. And we finished our first interview, and of course that was conducted in open session. And then we took a little brief recess so everybody could stretch their legs. And I believe we're ready to resume our process. And our procedure has been... Let me say that bit. We're at Agenda Item 1B. And that is to conduct the City Manager finalist interview with Mr. Tom Aker. And again, this interview, like the last, will be conducted in open session. And are we ready to proceed?
We are.
All right, and before we begin, Mr. Aker, do you have any questions for us about procedures or anything like that?
I don't think so.
Okay. Basically, each council member is going to ask you two questions.
Okay.
And I get to start by asking you... Oh, you know what? We... I believe the questions are a little different, so we need to select who's going to ask which question. Sorry, can you go with this minute?
I have two and five.
All right.
Yeah, what'd you say?
Two and five. That's Linda.
I have two.
Okay.
I have two of my own as well.
Trust me.
And then, Mr. Benardot?
Let's see what we've got here. Probably number 10 I would like, Ms. Peters. Number 10. And number nine.
And Ms. Bolton?
I have number 17. And a question of mine.
Okay. And Mr. Shu?
Yes. I got number six, and then I got one I'll pick up on between there.
All right. And then, of course, Mr. Meyer will be invited to ask questions. And I think we are ready to get underway. I will pose the first one. Now that you have served as Acting City Manager, what are your impressions of the organization? And where do you see opportunity for enhancing operational effectiveness and efficiency?
The... In the past five or six weeks, I think I've gotten to know most of the staff. There are a few departments I've yet to go out and visit, which I'm trying to get scheduled. But overall, my impression of staff is that we've got good staff. Generally, I think there's some things that we can always improve upon. And I've been trying to work with department heads as I identify things to start asking questions. As far as the organization as a whole, you know, my impression is I think everyone is working well together, but I think there's some improvement in how different departments and areas work with each other and try to accomplish the better good for the citizens and for the community itself. I've got some thoughts and ideas on some... I'm not going to call it reorganization, but I think tweaks in the structure that would help make things a little bit more efficiently. I still want to talk with some staff members as I'm molding those ideas before I bring them to City Council, because I'd like City Council to have a thought on it and also to support any type of changes I might want to make. So... But overall, I think things are good. I think what I can bring as with my management style is to take people to that next level to increase their performance and their effectiveness as staff. To borrow, you know, a term, they're good, but I think we can take them to great new staff and make this a better community.
Thank you. I have one additional question. And that sort of dovetails on what you just addressed. Does the city currently, in your opinion, take advantage of municipal support networks such as DOLA, CML, and others?
Yeah, I think to some degree they do. I know the departments are... A lot of departments, not all of them, work well with DOLA and seek DOLA out for assistance. I know the City Attorney's Office and City Managers' offices have used CML as a resource. I think we can always use them to more of our advantage than what we may have in the past. I plan on using both those organizations. And then other regional partners and other city managers as a resource as well when we come up with questions or problems or want to bounce ideas off of other folks to see. Are we doing the same thing? Have you guys had to tackle this problem before? What have you done with this situation? So I think we... I think staff does use it. Not all staff use it as well as I think we could. But a lot of it maybe that they don't know what's out there as well, so it's getting them that information, that resource, to make sure they know what's available.
Thank you. Do I have a volunteer? Mr. Anthony.
Relax a moment. Earlier when we were picking questions, you're sitting there and it's like watching a firing squad load. Anyway, my question is, having the unique opportunity to be the interim manager, which I understand was temporary, and now on the threshold of a permanent position, how will your priorities change for what you want to do for us? Or what... Or you want to lead Trinidad?
Yeah, I don't know if my priorities will change that much as interim versus as being City Manager. Because I've tried to go into the interim position as a City Manager, not as a temporary, trying to continue to move things forward. I think what could change is once I've had a chance to sit down with the council to make sure that what staff is doing, what I'm doing, aligned with council's priorities as well so that we're in step together with each other. So there may be some tweaks, but I'm still in that process of gathering all the information to set the priorities, because there's a lot of things that I see that... Or have been thinking about. And it is sitting down and saying, which one should I tackle first? Or which issue do I want to tackle? And some things I may, as I talk with council members, it's like, well, we've already tackled that issue. You don't want to go there right now. So I think I'm going to find out some of those as well as I continue to work with the community and the staff and the council.
Okay. And then my second question is, yesterday I see you and Leanne are sitting together behind me, and then I think somebody commented, "What a novel idea, city and county together." And having that as a foundation, my question is, what do you see as the future of collaboration between the city and county? And then the things that we can combine limited resources on both ends for a common good? For who does affect the most? The taxpayer.
Correct. I mean, they are the same taxpayers.
Right.
I think it could be endless on what we can work together on. The county administrator and I are trying to meet every other week to have discussions and ideas. We've made that commitment. We've met twice. So I think we're still developing that list. The county commissioners sent a letter identifying a few things like fuel, what can we do with some of our public work staff. I think we still need to explore what some of those options are. We've already got our public work staff on each side starting to talk with each other on fleet issues and on the fuel issues, on what can we do, what are some of the downsides. But I think it can do nothing but increase our involvement together. And one of the thoughts I've mulled around and I want to bring up to Leanne is how do we have joint... More and more, more joint meetings together? And how do we bring other cities within the county as well together to help share resources or ideas and work together?
Thank you. Maybe we should look down the line?
Ms. Michelle's next.
I remember when we interviewed you the first time, and you had some familiarity with Trinidad, but obviously Trinidad's a very different place than Commerce City. I guess I want to ask you, what were you most disabused of and what meant greater than your expectations? In other words, as you look forward and you've been able to form an opinion, you've met people in this community, where are the areas of, I'll call it, low-hanging fruit that pleasantly surprised you? And then the second part of the question is, whether the things are going to be much more of a challenge than you expected in taking the job?
Okay. You know, I think the low-hanging fruit or the things that impressed me the most, that surprised me, would be how much the community works together. You know, I had heard about the challenging times in the past year, year and a half. And when I got here, I didn't sense and still don't sense any of that. I sense that folks are really wanting to work together. And there's that sense of community. It's hard to put it into words. But, you know, when I sat in that first meeting that I was here and had the boards and commissions, I was very impressed on how many boards and commissions and how involved the citizens are in what's going on in the community to be a excellent supplement to staff in many respects. So that was very refreshing, and I was impressed with that. But everyone I've met has had that welcoming, open feel and wanting to have that sense of, we've done and seen the past, let's continue it forward. So I think that was very impressive to me and somewhat surprising, because I was probably expecting the worst, that I would get bombarded with people telling me how bad things were. And that has not been the case. And I still don't sense that. As I go to more meetings and meet more people in the community, it's, I think, been reinforced that more people want to see things moving forward. And I think the council's setting that tone as well. Some of the challenges, I think that... And I don't... I'm not going to say I wasn't expecting it or anticipating it, but I think it's our budget and how can we do more within that budget? And then look at how we can increase revenues. I think that's a challenge universal. It's not a surprise, but I think it's something that really needs to be paid attention to. And if you asked me, one of my top priorities, that would be one of my top priorities, is taking a look at that and making sure we're doing the right things.
And can you be specific about that? Are there things that are percolating in your head after, you know, being here for a couple of months?
I think...
Even if it's just the general direction?
You know, a general direction is making sure, and I've told staff this when I meet with them, is to make sure that we're using our resources effectively. I've heard some anecdotal things of, you know, people want new things, they want salary increases, but at the same time, I don't think they're... They may not be utilizing the resources most effectively. They don't... I don't know if some people may not recognize or realize that if they have... If they do this or allow this to happen on one side of the coin, the other side is there's going to be less money within the city's budget for them to do other things that they want to do as well.
All right, and then just the second question would be...
I guess the first was a follow-on, but...
Can your first... And I ask the same question of Mr. Schneider. Now that you've got your feet firmly on the ground, what would your goal be for the first 90 days?
I don't think it's one goal. I think there's a couple... I think I would give it a couple of goals within the first 90 days. One, as we've talked about, I want to sit down with City Council and get your priorities and start working with that list. And then I also want to sit down with the department heads and work with them once we've developed that priority list or that plan from City Council for the next two years, not just this year, but the following year as well. Sit down with staff and get them aligned as well with that and learn what they're doing and see how they match or where they don't match. And then come back to City Council and say, do we tweak things? Or do we keep moving forward based on the directions Council told me? That ties into a secondary goal, which would be to start looking at, how do we tie that into the budget process? And to start the budget process a little bit earlier than I believe it's been done in the past. So that what we are doing as staff for the community is aligned with our budget as well. And part of that is getting staff, working with staff, to have an understanding that we may be asking them as department heads to track what they're doing, but the reason we're asking them to track what they're doing is so that we can make sure what they're doing is aligned with what the budget is set for and what council has heard from the residents that they want to see as well. So those are the two biggest things that I would do. There's a lot of smaller little things, like taking a look at the employee policy manual, taking a look at some of our processes within departments, but that'll take longer term. And I want to do it thoughtfully as well without it being like, I'm intern today, and then if I should become the permanent within a week or when council names a permanent City Manager, that things don't just start automatically changing, but we work into that and work together so they understand the whys.
Thank you.
It's my turn.
Good morning.
How would you describe Trinidad's financial conditions?
My impression is Trinidad is solid. I don't think we're flush with financial resources. I think... But I don't think you're in a dire strait that we need to be worried about furloughs or layoffs or cutting services. But I do think we have to pay attention to it. Because I think from looking at the revenue projections that have been coming in from the end of the year, last year, we're steady to last year, in my opinion. We're holding our own, but by no means are we seeing a big trend upward yet. So I think we have to be cautious. Next year, probably cautious the following year as well, is how do we spend those resources? But part of it is finding out within our budget, are there some hidden resources that we're not aware of that we can also utilize to help the general fund? And that may be taking a look at the utilities and how much they contribute to the general fund based on the services that they're providing.
My second question is, what do you see as Trinidad's greatest economic development opportunities?
As I've been here and as I've been getting to know people, I think there's several. Tourism, of course, I think we have to capitalize on that. But it's not the only economic development potential the city's got. Secondary, I think we need to take well advantage of the industrial part, make sure that is advertised and marketed to its best ability. I think it's a kind of a hidden gem out there that I don't think has been fully exploited. I think we also have to be more proactive in what we do with economic development, where we go out and we go out and identify what some of Trinidad's strengths are, match those with what some potential prospects could be, and try to capitalize on that so we know what they're looking for as well. And try to go out there and bring them into Trinidad. I think there's... I think the Economic Development Corporation is starting to think that way a little bit this year. I did meet with them last week. We're going to bring them to City Council sometime in February. And I think they're moving that direction, which impressed me. I was... I had a concern until I met with them last week, with this county administrator, we both met with him. So I think that's an opportunity. And then looking at, you know, don't rely on the natural resources as much as we've been relied on in the past. That's boomer bust, we recognize that. Take advantage of that when it's here and to the greatest extent. Put some of that away for when they're not here. But then also look at, you know, mid-sized companies, even larger companies, to see if they might want to locate something here because of what Trinidad is and what it offers to their employees.
Mr. Benardot?
Since you've been here, you've been very open and honest with me and I believe with this whole council. And my question for you this morning, as elected as the new City Manager, how long a tenure would you plan?
As long as you would like to have it. And I'm serious about that. I think it's a relationship that is... Works for both the council and the manager. I like to say that as a minimum, I want to give at least two years, and that's what I'm required to do with ICMA, but I think it's longer than that. It takes you a couple of years to get everything kind of set and look at things and get plans in place. And then it takes you another two or three years to actually see those things to fruition, to completion as well. So I'm thinking it's five-plus years. That's my goal. But a lot of it depends on how the relationships are with each other. As you can see from my tenure at Commerce City, I'm not one that's going to... That jumps around a lot. I've come to like Trinidad. And my wife even notices it when I go home, that I'm happy coming home, but I'm also happy to come back down to Trinidad. And I think I want to... I like to set roots down. So I'm not going to say I'm looking to retire her, because I don't know when retirement is, but I hope to have a long tenure.
Also, in the last couple of work sessions and council meetings, we have discussed utility rates and stuff like that. Have you had the opportunity to evaluate the utility rates?
I have not had a chance to fully evaluate the utility rates. I think we still need to take a look at the gas rates, see if we can't bring them lower. I think we're moving in the right direction with the electric rates. I still think there's more that we can do there. My sense is the water rates are okay. I do have a concern with the sewer rates, but I haven't looked at them in detail yet. Thank you, Mr. Aker.
Ms. Bolton?
Mr. Aker, do you think there is adequate transparency of city operations, plans, and financial transactions?
In some areas, I think it's very good. In some areas, I think we need to be... We can increase that. For example, not a lot of cities publish the bills they're paying when, you know, as part of their council packet and take it to council. So I think that's very good. I think we've started putting the packet, complete packets on the website. I think that's moving in a direction in the right way. Of course, everyone, we've got the open meetings. But I think there's more that we can do as staff, and that's all staff from the bottom up as far as making sure that what we do is... That we're accountable for it with the eye that we're in the public eye. And we should be not afraid of what we're doing and for the public to be able to see what we're doing. That's part of what I've been trying to work with, the department heads. And actually, I've got, I think, most everyone buying into and working into on this whole sense of, to be accountable, we need to know what everyone is doing. It's not that we're being Big Brother and watching what's going on. It's just making sure that we're being accountable for the resources that we've got. Are we using them most effectively? And I think next year, we'll see even a better reporting process of what all the departments and the staffs have been doing.
Great, thank you. If you were to be offered the permanent City Manager position, what are your salary and employment contract requests or expectations?
I guess I would start off by saying I think we would both be fair in those negotiations. I'm still developing those in my mind, but I think they're all tied together. So I would hate to say, here's what I want my salary to be without knowing what some of the other opportunities might be within the contract. I will say I do recognize and anticipate it would be less than what I had been making in Commerce City, and I'm fine with that. So it's... I've got some thoughts and ideas, but I think it's premature to say exactly what those figures are at this time. But I want to be fair, like I believe I was fair and I think council was fair when we were negotiating my interim contract.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shu?
Sorry.
No, you're fine. I kind of want to... This question's kind of... You know, it's... It's kind of fair in a way, but kind of unfair in a way because you haven't been here that long. We're going to take care of you one way or another. But, you know, in capital improvement projects and inner structure of the city, you've been here, you've seen some of it.
Yes.
What do you think the improvements should be in, say, a specific area? Do you think we should do the inner structure part? Or should we work on capital improvements? Where would you come off on something like that? I mean, this is an older city. We've had problems with water, gas, sewer stuff. Do you think our priorities should be addressed to inner structure? Or should we look for capital improvement areas?
I think, given the budgetary concerns, that we should be focusing primarily on taking care of what we've got. Because I think too many times, and it's commonly happens, is we defer maintenance. There are a couple of areas that have come up recently, like the asphalt plant. It's sorely in need of being taken care of. So it's hard to justify doing a lot with always doing new things when it's hard to maintain or you discover that there are things that haven't been maintained. So I think my goal would be to start looking at, how do we come up with a plan for how are we going to maintain what we've got? And there's probably some things out there that we can take care of relatively quickly with relatively little expense, but just to make sure we're paying attention to it. Having said that, I still think you need to be able to have that flexibility to take advantage of opportunities that might come up. Let's say through the grant process or other matching funds or even funds that are given to the city if you apply for them. Take advantage of those opportunities. But you've got to have a plan in place that addresses, you know, long-term, how are we going to financially pay for and identify the improvements that need to be done. Plus you... But also take advantage of what are some new things that might actually make older things either be replaced or be more efficiently used as well.
Okay, I'm going to really put you on the squad now. You know, you've kind of worked with us in that. What... And I'm asking you to be honest. What do you think, as a council, we can do better to make this town?
That's a good question. Well, one, in your doing, is you're working together. I think that's very important. Not that you can't have disagreements or shouldn't have discussions, I think. But a council that can work together and both in council meetings and out in the public, I think, is critical. I think giving me more input and ideas of what you've heard from the community so we can set the priorities, I think that would be helpful. I think you're all communicating well with me. Of course, we can always improve that. But part of that is you letting me know if I'm not communicating in a manner that is working for you as well, because you're each individuals. And I'm beginning to pick up some of them, how to, like, get a hold of you when I need to get a hold of you. And but I think it's embracing the change that's happening and then giving staff and myself that support out there in the community, but also letting us know when we're doing something that's not sitting right with the community. And at most, like, being honest with me and being open with me as well and open to staff.
Thank you for the answer.
Mr. Miller? You look deep into ideas. I want to give you an opportunity to ask a question or two.
Thank you. A couple of things. In your opinion, does the city have a viable risk management program in place?
I would say no. I think that's one of the areas that I've got an impression that we might need to deep up a little bit. I've got... We've got a safety committee. I don't think it's as active as it could be. I took a look at the safety manual when I first got here, and it's very old. So I think that's something that we need to pay attention to. A part of that is, I think, and I think the staff's been doing a good job. So I'm not saying the staff has been ignoring it, but in a small... but in a smaller community, and Trinidad is not unique, you've got many people wearing many hats. One thing in that tune that I'd like to take a look at is, how do we dedicate a person to paying attention to that? Or are we spending some money because of not paying attention to risk management that we could actually pay for someone to pay attention to that? Because I don't want to put additional burden on existing staff resources. But at the same time, I don't want to try and say, we need to go hire a body if we can't afford to hire that body. So we have to be creative on how we find that solution.
Okay, thank you. How would you describe the city's availability of parks, recreational amenities, open space, so forth?
Being that I started in the parks with my public sector career, I think there are, I think overall, for the size of community and the budget the community's got, I'm impressed with the parks and I'm really impressed with the trail system. That being said, I think we need to continue to enhance both the existing parks. I think we need to continue to work on the trail system and connectivity because I understand that's one of the things, we're talking with a few people that issued to Trinidad and I think we bring people and keep people in Trinidad. As far as new parks, I was exploring part of the city yesterday and I noticed, you know, in some areas, there isn't a park that's easily accessed by all of the community. So taking a look at that, but you've got to do it in a thoughtful and planned manner. So updating that parks and recreation portion of the planning documents to say, where are we adequately served, where are we adequately served? And then maybe work with the school district as well because I think there's some joint uses that can come up that make things more effective than inefficient. Having a good parks and trails and open space plan and amenities is what helps bring people into your community. In my view, you've got to have a skilled workforce and educated workforce. You've got to have the parks and those amenities. You've got to have good schools and you've got to have good healthcare and a well-run government. I think that will help really people into the community.
Thank you.
And Les, I want to leave you over the mic.
Thank you, Mayor. I am going to be Debbie Downer here. And I'm going to say, because I have talked to you about this at some length, Tom, and I really think that council needs to know, part of the packet that they were given, that we were given, is of course, this lawsuit. And it is a remarkably favorable, you know, kind of procedural posture and outcome in terms of you and your involvement. And I think they need to hear about this for a bit. They need to hear a little bit of your version and what has happened and how essentially the case has been, has been won from your perspective. I'm not sure everyone knows that and I think this is a good time for you to be able to comment on this.
Okay.
Please.
What Les was talking about, and I don't think I've, I've been, tried to be open with everyone about it. I don't know if I've spoken to any council member about it, but I was involved in a federal lawsuit last year along with my former city manager. At one point, the mayor was named in the case, so was our human resources director. And it stemmed from an employee that I had to fire back in 2008. And a lot of lessons learned in going through that experience. Two weeks in federal court on this lawsuit. And it's still not completed, but she's appealing the decision. What it stemmed from was an employee that was our economic development director at the time, was, had been there for some time, was not working well with the city manager and the city manager asked me to take her under my wing, thinking that, one, I had a relationship with her and had worked with her before. We had a second deputy, that person had just started, so it wasn't really fair to give her that person. I worked with her a couple of months and jointly, the city manager, the deputy city manager, city attorneys and our outside attorneys, we decided we needed to let her go. She just was not a good fit with staff and with the organization. A lot of what it stemmed from was whenever things did not go the way she wanted them to go, one of our arguments was that she would go around whoever that person was. The other issue was not keeping the city manager informed on things ever happened. Under the guise, they were confidential. When you don't keep anything confidential to the city manager, that's improper. The city manager should know what's going on. And we had tried to work with her on that. But again, a lot of lessons learned. Documentation, 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 I can't say how much, and trying to work with people and documenting and you're working with them. But also, you know, I think what it stemmed from, a lot of it, is we tried to help her giving reasons of why we were letting her go, hoping that it would help her in the future. And that came back and bit us in the backside. So a lot of lessons learned. I think, I think we did the right thing for the organization. I think there are things that we can always do better as organizations who are dealing with employees. I think the right decision was made by the jury. We were sweating it for a while, but it's not done. So that's the unfortunate thing.
If I may, when you say the right decision was made by the jury, it is correct that you, with the people that were named defendants in the lawsuit, won the case at trial?
Yes.
So you prevailed and the outcome was favorable for you and the people that were associated with that as employees of Commerce City?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Just want to emphasize that point. I have nothing else, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Well, I don't have any additional questions. Does anybody have any closing question?
Do you have any questions of us?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Or is there anything that we didn't ask you about that you think is important for us to know?
I don't want to steal everything from the retreat that I want to have with you. Some of the questions you were asking are some of the things that I wanted to talk with you at the retreat. You know, actually, I think I know you want to make a decision relatively quickly. Actually, it's moved, this process has moved faster than I thought it was going to move, which is good for the community. I'm very happy to be here and to have been here. That should be the case. Because I think I came in with a goal to, I think I said it my first interview as intern, to come in and work with the city and leave it in a better place than what we found it. That's still my goal if I should be selected as the permanent city manager. I have come to love the community in my short time that I've been here. I actually went driving around yesterday looking at potential houses. You know, just because I hadn't had a chance to really look around during the day since I've been going back and forth to Denver every weekend with the stock show and being with my wife. So, but I do want to be here and I hope that we have a long, continued relationship.
Thank you. Thank you. Having concluded our interview and the hosted business for the special meeting, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Sure.
Motion by Ms. Bolton, second by Mr. Schu. Any discussion? And I think we're ready for the roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Donato?
Yes.
McHale?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Schu?
Yes.
Palascus?
Yes.
Maggie Ginnell?
Yes. The time is now 11:14 a.m. and we are off the record.